Five, according to that clock, so I guess it's time to begin. We'll begin the joint meeting for Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee of the Whole for February 12th. Welcome, everyone. We have a full house here for the committee. We'll begin with a review of the draft agenda for February 25th because there's no school on the 18th. All right. We'll start with pages four and five. Are any changes? Pages six and seven? Pages eight and nine? Pages 10 and 11? Pages 12 and 13? Just a question about 8.2. Is that really ready?
I believe it is.
Okay, that's exciting.
We spoke about that this morning, yeah.
Okay. And pages 16 and 17? Pages 18 and 19? Okay. The comments. We have some ads. Excuse me. Request for my absence is item 2.4.
Motion to approve the agenda for Tuesday, February 25th, with including a sunshine waiver for an ad sheet.
Mr. Beekman? Should I get to speak, sir? All right.
Hi. For item 3.5, Citywide Infrastructure Deferred Maintenance Backlog Report. There was much talk here at the TNE meeting, I think it was, about that report, and streetlight things were mentioned. I think it was mentioned by Samina Usman, I think is her name, if correct. She works for CARE, the Bay Area Representative. She mentioned that in San Diego, you know, there's quite an uproar going on about the smart light poles that are being placed, or not the smart light poles, but the light bulbs themselves, the streetlights themselves. And there's much of an uproar going on down there. And I've tried to state here before that I just wanted to remind yourselves that I think good policy practices here can really help that situation. And I wonder what, I don't quite know what they're doing in San Diego about that at this time, but Samina Usman of CARE mentioned those sort of things. It was nice to hear. And that, you know, as a way to alleviate the situation and, you know, to, it's good practices. And I think good practices develop, you know, trust between all parts of the community and the sort of things. So I just wanted to inform you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. The General Plan City Council hearing for 2020 is on item D.
Motion to approve the schedule. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item E is the public record. Mr. Beekman? Is there a motion?
Motion to note and file.
Hi. I wrote a real nice letter about this that I'll send yourselves later today. I was, to speak to my public record about Vision Zero practices. I was really impressed with how everyone worked yesterday on this item, the Vision Zero Action Plan. And I'm hopeful about what we can do. I think the Vision Zero Task Force or Committee that's going to take place quarterly starting in March is a great idea. And that you want to invite the bicycle community to participate, to be a part of that committee is awesome of you, that you're willing to do that. And it's a great step. And I think, it's my personal feeling that, I don't know how to describe it, but to just continue, it's my personal feeling that I can't, the words can't come to me. But to continue, the community experience, we are going to have a good community experience. And it's, I'm impressed by that. What I am considering is that, it's coming to my brain, but then I can't quite formulate it. You know, the idea is a responsibility. I think we're all learning, I felt we all took a deep breath and thought, you know, something may be pushing a little too hard with Division Zero at this time. And I think we all took our collective breath and say, if we go slow and be considerate with each other, we can all work on something important in this coming year with this project. So good luck to all of us in what we're going to be working towards. And thank you for your efforts. I hope that could be a part of other city and community functions in this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha O'Connell, GS MOL Regional Manager. I rise in support of the Housing and Community Development Commission's vote to request that the council give a mobile home designation now to all mobile home parks. This is also advocated by the Law Foundation, and their letters started coming in in at least 2017, and we're still waiting. The current inconsistent and confusing patchwork of general plan land use for mobile home parks must be ended. The City of San Jose cannot continue to lurch from one park to the other as rumors and reality of closures come up. I will tell you that three years ago, I heard about these two parks. I went to the city, I asked for the names. They said they wouldn't release them to me. They said they didn't want to, quote, "panic people." I went back in the record, I found an email by Paralas, Jimenez, and Rocha on these two parks. I called up their leadership. I said, "You're not children. You're not going to panic. You're going to organize." And I released the names of those parks, and they did. They got organized. So I encourage you to give all the parks a designation now, and I will tell you, and I don't release information until I have hard evidence. I'm hearing now that there are two more parks that are set for redevelopment. Once I have sufficient information, I will release the names, and I will go to the people, and I will say, "Where is the council? Did they give you this designation that's going to make a difference?" No, they're going to run now to you and say, "We're concerned." So please, you have a chance to do this once and for all, for all parks on the, I believe it's the 10th. Please do the right thing and give this designation to all parks.
Thank you. Okay, on to, on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Onto G1, Mr. Beekman. This is the consent calendar. And you're just going to be speaking to those items of Lunar New Year and the Winter Walk?
Yeah, hi. To speak about the Lunar New Year, I think that was about approval of funding for the Tet Festival. I was going to attend those Tet Festivals, but because of this coronavirus, I could not. And I'm kind of hurt and angry about it. And I just wanted to remind that, you know, the practices that I'm a part of, they're very good practices that deal with issues here on a local level. And it's from these good practices that I think we can ask larger questions of our federal government, of the UN, and of international countries. They can't practice those sort of practices anymore. They can't practice disaster capitalism, shock doctrine tactics. And we have the power to do that here at the local level now, and with the guidelines and the practices I'm a part of. And I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On the consent calendar.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item G2 is Board of Fair Campaign Political Practices Recommended Revisions to City Ethics and Open Government Provisions under Title 12. Welcome, Mark.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Vani, Deputy City Attorney. I'm here today to provide a brief overview of the Board of Fair Campaign and Political Practices Recommended Revisions to the City's Ethics and Open Government Regulations under Title 12, as well as the board's resolution for governing its hearing procedures. And so I'll get right into it. The first recommendation relates to the scheduling of special municipal elections on initiative measures. In 2017, the state legislature amended the Elections Code, altering how special elections are scheduled. And that amendment has the potential for unattended consequences for the city because in our city charter, we have a provision which has never been invoked, but would allow an initiative group to compel or force a special election if they receive a certain percentage or achieve a certain percentage of signatures. And so, under the Elections Code, prior to 2017, there was a mechanism in place that allowed the governing body of, like, the city council to defer that special election to avoid having a scenario where you had to have three elections in a year if there was a primary or a general election nearby. So the board's recommendation is to incorporate the statute in the Elections Code that was removed by the legislature in 2017. The second recommendation is a clarifying amendment to the filing requirements of the Form 502. That is the form that candidates have to fill out to disclose the source of their personal funds. As it says in the ordinance now, it says pre-election, the Form 502 has to be filed every time a pre-election statement is filed. That should say campaign disclosure statement. So we are, the board is recommending amending that ordinance to conform with current interpretation. The third recommendation is aligning the city's surplus campaign funds ordinance with state law. Both state law and the municipal code regulate surplus campaigns, and these are campaign funds, and these are the funds that remain after an election is over, and the use of them are regulated. The board is recommending changing the deadline for when campaign funds become surplus funds to conform with state law, as well as expanding the permissible uses for those funds, again, to better align with what's allowed under state law. The fourth recommendation relates to the revolving door ordinance. To remind the Rules Committee, this item came from the city auditor. It was referred to the board for consideration. It has to do with whether or not the revolving door ordinance should have an exemption for nonprofits. The board considered the proposal, and their recommendation is to remove the nonprofit exemption so that the revolving door ordinance, which regulates what city officials and designated employees can do after they leave city office, would apply equally to for-profit entities and nonprofit entities. And to clarify, the current nonprofit exemption applies if the nonprofit has engaged in programs that have received financial or formal support from the city within the last five years. The fifth recommendation has to do with the lobbying ordinance. Again, this is a clarifying amendment, just updating the requirements for what triggers the weekly filing. And again, this recommendation is to conform with current interpretation of the lobbyist ordinance. And then finally, the sixth recommendation relates to the board's resolution itself. The board has engaged in a process where they're evaluating how they take in complaints. And the resolution, and the board felt that the resolution should explain to the public what areas are within their jurisdiction and which are not. And this looks at the municipal code, as well as follows what the FPPC does when they evaluate complaints. And then also, it outlines the clerk's role when he or she receives complaints that are insufficient on their faith, excuse me, and memorializes a process whereby the clerk rejects the complaint without prejudice, asking for the complainant to specify the Title 12 violation that they allege has occurred, and then allowing them to refile it before then submitting it on to the evaluator for further investigation. So I'm here for any other questions, if you have, but concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, just really a process question. Rick or Dave, I guess really primarily Rick. What happens? We've got recommendations.
Well, it comes to this committee for comment, essentially, and any feedback, and then deciding whether or not to move it forward to city council.
All right.
But I think at this point, this is the first step in the process.
And do you want to apply red, yellow, green prioritization here if there's substantial amount of work, or?
You know, this is coming from a commission.
Yeah.
I don't know if we do that with, you know, they review this periodically. I think it's every two years.
Yes.
It seems.
Right.
And they came forward with recommendations. So we'd never really used it as part of priority setting.
Okay.
But it really is up to you, if you want to throw it into priority setting.
And we are, I think we're scheduled to have our biennial ethics review this year, is that right?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it's a little bit tardy, but yeah.
Okay.
This could be incorporated into that.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful, since we've got to have one anyway, and we ought to, I'm sure we're going to want to discuss some of these items.
Okay.
So let's open it up to the committee for any views. That's what I read, is?
Questions?
Yeah.
I have a question about number four. So I think it was Kira who came to, I think it was Rules, last, and asked to be exempted from the revolving door rule. So this would not allow for that, and I think we approved it, and she moved forward, and she's able now to interact. But so would this rule then now make that not possible?
No, there would still be a way for the council to waive the revolving door, just like you did with Kira.
There are currently provisions that allow for automatic exemption from the revolving door, doesn't apply. And there were some unique cases. The two that come to mind are Dean Monroe many years ago when he went to work for the San Jose Sports Authority, and then Pat Dando when she went to work for the former Chamber of Commerce. Because the city had provided aid to, and had worked with financial aid, there was a specific exemption for those, going to those nonprofits, because the theory, I think, probably from the council standpoint, was they were doing the city's work, and so it was, it really wasn't a conflict. I think that's what caused the confusion, and so the board's saying, hey, just treat all nonprofits the same. And if you want to do a waiver, it has to come to Rules and the council.
So no automatic?
No automatic waivers.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And so this will get cross-referenced, it sounds like, to the greater council, or is it up to the rules?
It's up to the rules committee to decide. If you want to get feedback and then maybe go back to the board, it really depends on what happens here, what you want to do with it.
I would like for this to go back to the greater council. That's just my recommendation. I'd love to hear my colleagues.
Well, I'm interested, so you said that we're in the cycle of doing a ethics review every two years?
Yeah, and it's under the charter, and the mayor lays a biennial ethics review. And so any changes that, independent of this, that may want to be reviewed, whether it's to revolving door, campaign ordinances, lobbyist, any and all the Title 12 ethics provisions.
Well, it makes total sense, then, to incorporate this into that review.
I agree with the vice mayor.
Well, I agree with the vice mayor, except that I don't know when the ethics review is going to take place.
So why don't we give direction? That the ethics review would take place sometime this spring. Does that give you guys enough time to be able to weigh in on this?
Yeah, we were ready to staff that. I mean, it's a charter requirement, so.
All right. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Great.
So in the spring?
Yeah. When the weather's nice.
When the weather turns hotter than this?
Okay. I know I had a couple of questions about these, but I think I can probably take them offline. Yeah, that's fine. I don't have any cards from the public on this, so we'll just vote to move this forward to the council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving forward.
So clarifying, you say move it to council or move it to the mayor's review, and then come back to council with whatever the mayor's ethics review comes back with?
I thought the ethics review was at council. Am I wrong?
I remember it.
Well, you'd have to take it to council ultimately.
Yes.
But you're making, the mayor makes the recommendation.
That's fine.
Setting the, yeah.
Okay, so we'll set the date and bring it all forward.
Okay. And that was the intent of my motion, too.
Great. Item three, which is exploring procurement of polypropylene.
Sorry, I apologize, mayor.
So if we want other things to be considered during the ethics review, how would we?
Either communicate to me in my office, within the Brown Act, or otherwise a memo to the council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's how it was done before.
Before, yeah. Okay, great. Now we're on to item three. Thanks, Mark. Exploring procurement of polypropylene plastic purification, say that three times fast.
Okay.
And recycling plant to advance regional waste sustainability. Councilman Kamis?
Yeah, I don't know if you have any cards from the public, but.
We do. Do you want to go there first?
Yeah, sure. I'll, yeah, I'd like to have them come up first.
Okay, sure. Joel Corona, followed by Blair Beekman.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and executive staff. California Waste Solutions appreciates and commends Councilman Comus for the memorandum to explore using city land that's being vacated for downstream recycling by Pure Cycle and also by San Jose's other recycling companies that have provided and do provide collection and processing of recycled plastics. Over the past 20 years, the amount and the types of plastics have increased dramatically, and we've risen to that opportunity to recycle them. But they have become dirtier, and they've become more difficult to recycle. In 2018 and 19, the China National Sword policy banned importing mixed plastic grades, and other Asian countries have followed along suit. The greatest threat and opportunity is the recycling of post-consumer plastics, especially dirty-soiled contaminated plastics. CWS early focused on helping reduce the contamination of the recyclables. That was followed by nationwide programs seeking both clear, excuse me, clean, empty, and unsoiled recyclables. Additionally, the state of California plans on increasing the amount of recycled content that's required in new beverage containers and other containers as well. The confluence of these three factors, the increasing amount of dirty plastics, the banning of plastics into foreign markets, and the higher post-consumer plastics required for new containers, provides both a wonderful opportunity and an obligation to innovate and collaborate on new infrastructure for domestic post-consumer plastics recycling. CWS is also exploring downstream recycling processing to wash, flake, and pelletize post-consumer plastics. We see value in helping the city and the region at becoming more self-reliant and more self-sustainable in plastics recycling. Toward that goal, CWS appreciates the opportunity to participate at properties that the city vacates or so entitles to do plastics recycling. San Jose is blessed to have great recyclers who do a good job for the city. We appreciate that. Any questions, please?
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
And thanks for your, and your team's efforts to recycle. Okay. I believe, Mr. Beekman?
Hi. To use this space as a community information place. Thank you. It's my understanding that frac gas, the use of frac gas is, will be needed for the future of plastics. And I just wanted to remind that we're making really good efforts to leave frac gas in the 2020s. We have to really review how we use frac gas in the 2020s and where plastics fit into that. I guess I just thought I would note that here. And I guess to thank you for your own efforts and how you're making incredible efforts in San Jose to leave natural gas and frac gas use, it'll just leave us open to much better choices for ourselves in the 2020s. And, yeah, it's just, it's nice to thank you as a city government in time like this for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The recommendation from the city manager's office is for prioritization. Councilman Kamis?
Yes. Mayor, thank you. And when I first took office, you know, we were taking a look at dry anaerobic digestors. I don't know if you recall that, Mayor, and I thought it was one of the most brilliant ideas at the time, and a great way to take care of the methane that comes out of our waste stream. And ever since I heard about, you know, that everything is going on with China and all this stuff, that we were actually shipping plastic all the way across the world, polluting the oceans, polluting the atmosphere, you know, I've been racking my brains to research things for the last few years. I did bring up other suggestions, but we, our office worked with Councilmember Foley and Councilmember Davis, and we created a memo that is being supported by Kip Harkness, who is enthusiastic about the opportunity to lead in this area of plastic recycling. These aren't the plastics that are clean and ready to go to China. These are the plastics like half-full ketchup bottles, used utensils, and, you know, thin film potato chip bags that cannot be recycled at all, even if you do take them to China. And so these end up being in the landfills and polluting other parts of the city and clogging machinery and what have you. I've been talking to a lot of recyclers as well and doing this research, and I think this idea really fits our plan in the city, you know, to participate in the climate accords, you know, the Paris Climate Accords. And I think it falls in line with our green environmental plans here in the city. And I'm hoping that our city actually takes a lead on this, as we have in the past on many other issues, and devoting some portion of the land and asking staff to work with recyclers to go forward and experiment on this idea, and hopefully provide a way to recycle plastic into new usable plastic instead of using virgin plastic, basically drilling and refining oil for that. I think it'd be, you know, we can use dirty stuff to create new materials. I think it's a great idea, and I'm hoping that the whole council supports this in the, I guess, the weeks for, I don't know when we're going to have the?
The 25th, I believe?
25th.
All right. So consider this your opening statement.
It is definitely my opening statement. I'll bring my props again.
Yeah, you can bring those props back. The ketchup might be all used up by now.
So I'll make a motion.
I'd like to know if you started out this morning with a full bag of potatoes.
So thank you, Councilmembers, for bringing this forward. I assume there's a motion there?
Motion to put forward to the priority setting.
Second.
Okay. And certainly interested in seeing what can happen through exploration here. Full disclosure, I think, of course, we do own that land with another partner, that is the city Santa Clara. And obviously, we've got some innovative partnerships like this. I know BioSelection, which is a great small startup led by two brilliant women, are doing similar work, and though slightly different. And there's no reason why we shouldn't consider it. Dave?
Yeah, I think you hit on the issue, though. The access to the property, we'll need to, the council's going to be seeing this very soon as we go through the process with Pond A18.
Yeah.
Actually, the property would need to be vacated and sold, and so someone would need to buy the property to locate the facility, unless all of our partners were in agreement that this was a regional wastewater facility-related function. So there's quite a bit of complexity on the land side of it, and I know that the issue here is bigger than the land. It's more about how we manage these type of rec.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. And ultimately, you know, we make, we're able to find the one-time money to be able to buy the land for ourselves, be able to do these kinds of pilots. That might be an interesting concept. Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on. We're now on to a referral from Councilmember Jimenez on zoning code and emergency shelter, and I believe we have members of Councilmember Jimenez's team here. Would you like to speak, Helen? No, no, okay. So, it's pretty self-evident. I think we saw this in the fall. It's brought back to us. Let's go to the community. Andrea Urtin, followed by Paul Soto. Hi, Andrea.
Hey, everybody. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing my voice here today. I think you all know, I know you all know, that we're in a crisis state right now with our homeless neighbors. We're not providing the affordable housing, the solutions that are necessary to get people off the street and keep them safe. I know you're all aware of that, and you're all doing everything you can. We have 1,291 shelter beds in this county in the cold weather months, and in the warm weather months, it drops to 799. We've got 6,100 homeless people in this very city alone, so do the math. It's just not enough. We need to decrease zoning regulations that prevent us from allowing not just the build-out, but allowing emergency shelter in our churches and our communities where people are anyway. So, anything you can do to vote for this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and please know, too, that Home First is here as a partner to help the city. So, as we move forward, if training is needed for churches and staff, we're more than happy to do it pro bono. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for walking the walk. Mr. Soto?
Paul Soto, I'm glad that, that the council is, is considering this proposal, but like, it's, it's the last page on this, and I know, of course, that wasn't intentional, but it seems like, you know, this is symbolic, that dealing with the homeless issues is always the last issue to deal with, just like it's the last page on this pamphlet, you know? The, the city is not responding in a way that is commiserate with the urgency of the situation, you know? Willow Glen had its choice. 16 people were trying to go over there to Hope Village, 16, nine of which were women. And I heard and I saw, because I went to the Alx Lodge, because I wanted to listen. I wanted to listen to the conversations. I wanted to listen how these people were talking. Redlining policies already segregated that area. You know, we already know how Willow Glen was established, and so now what they're doing is redlining via class, social class, economic class. That's not okay. So, what I would like to see is each one of the districts, where the district has proximity to resources in the inner cities, every single one of those districts start bearing some weight, start carrying some weight. And the reason why I say that is because of how dangerous Councilman Camus' comment was yesterday. I sat there and I heard this man, as a city councilman, state, "Well, I want to ask a question. You know, these 1,200 people, you know, what I heard was that people choose to be homeless. That right there, those kinds of comments, that kills people. People die as a result of that kind of callous ruthlessness." And I don't think he realizes just how ruthless that comment was, but I did, and that's why I'm here.
Karen Gillette, followed by Martha O'Connell and Scott Largent. May I say something, Mayor? Yeah, I'll ask you to respond in just a moment. I, I agree with what you're about to say, which is that was taken completely out of context, because I know you were citing somebody else who'd said exactly that. So, I, I think I anticipate what you're about to say. Let's hear public comment first. Sir, you've had your chance to speak. Ms. Gillette?
Hello, I think most of you know me. Karen Gillette, a member of Winter Faith Collaborative, faith-based organization that, that coordinates services for homeless in our city. I, I'm trying to think of something new that I can say. I've spoken to you many times. I think the main thing I'd like to say today is I urge you to support Sergio's memo. We spoke four years ago about having transitional villages in every council district. We keep speaking about that. I think this, his proposal in his memo will help advance that process. Another thing I would like to say, as I think I've presented to most of you, this report from the Seattle University School of Law. It's titled "No Rest for the Weary: Why Cities Should Embrace Homeless Encampments." So, you know, that's another step that we could take. We could take and bring water and garbage collection into the encampments and make them a must, much better place to live for people. There are a lot of things that we could do. The other thing is, once we do choose a, an operator to run a project, we could let that operator, like Home First with the BHC, they've hired some wonderful people to work at the BHC project, but for some reason, the, the control by our Housing Department continues, and, and I think that that's unfortunate.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Connell, Ms. O'Connell, forgive me.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared to speak on this, so I don't, I'm not going to be as coherent as I usually am. I rise in support of Sergio's memo. I will just tell you that last year, my eyes were really opened. There was a senior lady with severe medical issues, and she got evicted from a bedroom she was renting in a mobile home park, and she ended up living in her car. So, I brought her down to housing, and there just wasn't any place for her then. There were all kinds of lists that she had to get on. So, anything that is going to increase our ability to have shelters and other forms of supporting, supportive housing, I encourage you to do. So, please support Sergio's memo.
Thank you. Scott Largent, followed by Blair Bickman?
Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out. I have a loud voice. I, I was hoping that we might get a little more creative with things. I, I'm on a ground level with all this stuff. I'm literally in the creeks. I'm at all these locations where all the homeless and mentally ill are at. I'm excessively documenting it, and they need a temporary solution. And by rezoning things in certain areas, I mean, we can get creative with this right now to start pulling people off the streets, or have the ability right now to start detoxing meth addicts. It was like beating a dead horse for three years for our county to understand that they're not on booze. They're on methamphetamines. So, now that money's being put in that direction, we can start filling that place that was a sobering station that's now for meth detox, okay? And we need a rehab the size of Costco, okay? These people need drug help. They are not going to get their lives back together unless they're off the meth. I spent two years working on my motorhome, and you guys have heard me talk about this motorhome forever, okay? I was a mechanic in a previous life. I could have had that motorhome running in one day. I worked on it for two years in your district, Chappie, on the side of a street there, and never could figure it out because meth fried my brain so bad. So, there's certain things people are unable to do. I tried to do things to get back into my child's life, to get into treatment. I was all over the place, hearing things, screaming, yelling, just out of my mind, and that's what, two years on methamphetamines. And that's bad dope that's coming out of Mexican super labs from cartels, and it's poison. And I'm wondering when we're going to declare a health emergency, because this is not normal methamphetamines out there. You guys get down on that street level and just listen to the screams, watch the chaos. It's shocking. And my daughter's got to see this when she goes to visit me at the courthouse. My daughter's got to get out of a car there at St. James Park as my ex feeds that meter. Let's just figure something out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickman? Sean, did, do you want, yeah, Mr. Bickman, I don't have a card for you, but feel free to come up after Mr. Bickman.
Hi, I just, I wanted to really thank you guys for the item last night where you rejected the hotel on Stockton Street, and that, that was an idea that had a unique zoning to it, and I actually thought it was kind of an interesting use of zoning. And I hope, you know, the, the neighborhood committees were, you know, they were responsive to ideas of affordable housing for that area, and, you know, so if you can learn to apply that kind of ideas to, to zoning for, for what this issue is about, you'll really be on the right track of things. And thank you. Thank you again for, for your efforts last night, and it was a very interesting city council meeting yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just curious how short you think we all are. I obviously support Sergio's memo. We definitely need as many areas rezoned or zoned so that we can build more shelters and things in the short term. If it just means that we have, like, the National Guard come in and erect a tent so that we can turn that into a temporary shelter, fine, but we need things that are immediate. 161 people died in our streets last year, and that was the initial total. We don't even have the total yet for the people that died in December. But last, 2018, 20 people alone died in December. So, obviously, our death rate just keeps ticking up and ticking up, and we just keep staying in the same box and doing the same old thing with the same old operators, the same old low bidder or only bidder, and we can't keep doing that. So, doing this at least gets us out of that box, and if we can do that, then we can also look for different bidders. We need different providers, and we need more options, and we need to treat this like the absolute emergency that it is, and we declared it an emergency, and that's all we did, was declare an emergency and not treat it like an emergency. It's like, we've got Ebola, but then we don't put on, like, the hazmat suits or anything like that, and I just think that that's been really shameful. Speaking of shameful, I just wanted to remind you, as my understanding of the Brown Act is that we talk to you during public comment, and you don't talk back to us about the things that we say in public comment. Could be wrong about that, but, you know, if I say, like, I don't know, Dev's a total commie, Dev doesn't turn around and say, like, "I am not a commie." See, I appreciate that, Dev. I knew you'd take that well.
She's not a commie.
But you know what I mean. Dev was the perfect one to use for that. So, but as far as, that's my understanding of the Brown Act. So, it's normally that we say things and then you don't respond to us during public comment. So, anyway, I support Sergio's memo, and I hope that it works, and we need more things like this. We need as many places where we can build shelters to prevent people dying, because we're doing a crappy job of that so far.
Thank you. Joanne Ponte will allow Rick to opine about what the Brown Act does or doesn't require.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'm Joanne Price. I represent.
Oh, forgive me, Joanne. I mispronounced your last.
Yeah, I'm with Life Moves, and I just want to say that thank you for the memo, Sergio. I think this is a really smart tool and a very simple tool that can be implemented. Having just gone through two city processes to add 15 beds at a couple of our shelters in San Jose, going through a whole change use permit, had months to the process, if we could get by right and open up the districts where we can build by right, 50 beds is a small enough solution that can fit easily within communities and neighborhoods, and every 50-bed shelter could probably house about 15 clients. Right now, in the point-in-time count, there was 98 families reported as being unsheltered in San Jose, so eight little modular units of 50 beds could easily help solve that problem. So, thank you for your consideration. I think it's a smart solution.
Thank you. Returning to the panel, Rick, I don't believe there's any prohibition the Brown Act is.
No, the, what's prohibited is the council can't debate amongst itself or take any action with respect to an item not on the agenda, and the public comment is that. With respect to any com, any questions from the mayor, the individual council member, or a comment from the mayor or individual council, council member, if that's permitted.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Camus?
Well, I, I take big issue with what was just said. I've been out there and I approving every single housing project since I've been in office. I have, actually, my name was on the memo that allowed housing in churches. My, my goal's always been to help those who need this shelter. I've approved two projects in my district. They haven't been built, but they've been approved. I, I, the, the comment that I made yesterday were words that were said by County Executive Smith, and if the county is not, it, it shows you that the county is not serious. I 100% do not agree with Jeff Smith when his assertion is that those people who are homeless are homeless by choice. Those are not my words. Those are the county executives, and you can go online, look at my YouTube video, because I recorded this when he said it. I put it online on the YouTube, Johnny Camus on the Record. You can go and listen to his words, not mine. And I question that, I question that because the county is supposed to be the biggest organization that's supposed to be taking care of homelessness, because they own the hospitals. They own the drug rehabilitation facilities. They own a lot of the things that the city does not do. They don't, the city does not treat meth addicts. The city does not provide hospital beds. The county does. We need their help. All we do is rebuild housing, and we have been doing that for years. So, I take real issue with, with being demonized here, and, and quite frankly, I was there protesting the demolition of the 160-unit potential building that, that was, that Sobrato wanted to convert, the old city hall, the whole city hall annex that could have been converted into 160-unit transitional housing. It could have been open, and that, just coincidentally, 160 people died last year. They also voted to demolish a 674-unit jail after they build their new jail.
Councilman Camus, I know now where you are, getting a little bit far off the topic, so.
Yes, so I, I, I just take issue, and I, and I, and I am answering the public's question, and I just want that person to know that, that this council takes, takes this issue very seriously. And I don't necessarily agree with everything in, in Councilmember Paralyz's memo, but I'm willing to entertain it. But I want it to be seen in the light that we are. This council has, has always been serious about tackling this issue. We've always been serious, and we're doing our best, but if partners don't step up, then shame on them.
All right, comments on this memorandum? All right, I believe the recommendation from the City Manager is that goes to prioritization next week. Is that right?
Yeah, could I just add a little context? I really, because I think it's important. I, I don't really have an explanation on, on why it took so long to get here. This, Councilmember Jimenez brought this forward in November, so we should have been talking about this sooner. Just reminding the committee, though, that our process here is to evaluate the workload associated with it. It's not a value assessment, and definitely this needs to go to priority setting, and really, that's the best chance for us to be able to get this work done, is on priority setting.
Okay, and I see Michael Breo's here, so I thought I'd take advantage of his knowledge in case he happens to know off the top of his head. Can you tell us, I know we have expanded shelters zoning.
Come on up, Mike, please.
Thanks, Michael. I know we've expanded shelters zoning to enable churches to do so. Is that just for temporary basis, or does that include permanent shelter? Yeah, it's Michael Breo from Department of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement. He usually introduces himself right as he sits down. He just needs a chance to do that.
Michael Breo from planning. So, so, yeah, so my understanding is what we've done, we, we've done a safe parking ordinance, which allows people to live or to reside in their vehicles on church parking lots, or not churches, it could be places of worship, parking lots of places of worship. So, we do, we do allow that.
Okay, but, but not shelter construction?
That's something that we're, we're considering, actually, in terms of, we're exploring that now.
I thought we liberalized the rules.
To be honest, I had to get back to you on that.
I have churches in my district.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that part of it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because I remember going through all of that. In fact, some of the folks in this room were pushing with us. Yeah, we're just sheltering in existing gyms or wherever. Okay, understood. Okay, so more work ahead. On the motion, oh, is there a motion, Councilmember Ramirez?
I just want to, and this came back from feedback from some of the advocates who were at yesterday's council meeting, and this is my oversight in terms of not putting a time certain, some of these issues in regards to our unhoused community, and so that our advocates can be there. I think we took quite a bit of time yesterday, and we, we stayed. there until twelve midnight. So it was a long meeting, but I apologize for, for not having a time certain, and hopefully, you know, we will, I'll make sure that, when I'm here at rules, I'll make sure that we're more cognizant of that. So, thank you for your support. That, that was a statement that I was gonna make, and if there's not a motion, motion to approve.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving forward. Okay, we're on to open forum. I have Martha O'Connell, Paul Soto, and Blair Beekman.
Thank you for the statement, Sylvia. I'm requesting a time certain for early evening for the mobile home issue, okay? Please don't put it at the end of the, of the night, because the seniors will not be there. They will leave.
I'm sorry, Martha, you referring to February?
I think it's March tenth.
Oh, March tenth. Alright.
So if you could do that, that would be...
So we'll try to put a note in the tip of the, so it comes back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, that's, that's for the, okay. Paul?
Paul Soto, I'm not gonna do any back and forth, other than to say that I know what I heard, and I know that it was prefaced to, for moral and ethical cover. Well, I'm gonna quote someone else, but I'm gonna say it. And this is said, I'm not saying that he said it as a citizen. He said it as a man with power, that wields power in this city. That's why it's so critical to, to keep that kind of language checked, because a person with power in this city expressing that kind of sentiment by virtue of the fact that you used your power in order to repeat that alone, you need to claim it. You're not gonna shovel out that responsibility onto someone else. You were the one that said it. You were the one that said it, not Jeff Garcia in this context. He said it in this context. And that's why I take offense, because that kind of language literally kills people. Edmund Burke stayed, Edmund Burke stated, "The only thing for evil to exist is for good men to do nothing." That's all that's necessary, is all we need to do is just neglect the situation. And that could be, that could be very clearly outlined and seen in the way that this council has dealt with this particular issue. They're not really accepting the fact that there is a direct causation, not correlation, causation, between the, the rising rents, the poverty that exists, and the systematic way in which poverty exists, because a person just doesn't magically end up in the creek. There's a process by which that happens, and it's a slow deterioration of the mind, of the body, and of the soul. That's what I'm talking about, and, 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 I know you guys are in a, in a, in the business of legislating things legally, but what I'm talking about is morals and ethics. I'm not talking about legalities, because the person in the creek and the person in the tent doesn't care about, the, the laws don't exist for people that are literally fighting for their lives.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you. To try to go over my, my words from Thursday's Smart City Committee, I got, I bumbled my words a bit towards the end in trying to talk about IOT practices, and I just wanted to try to make clear here that, you know, we're practicing large corporate structures with IOT and technology at this time, and I, my, I feel the guidelines that I work with really work towards, if we practice them well, it can bring large corporate structures into small, small startups and stuff like that, and it can be a way for, you know, it's just organization for all parts of the community, not just the corporations, but everyday people, you know, intermixing with those corporations to have a good set of rules of the road and, and good accountability and understandings what, what we work towards. And that's kind of what I wanted to say about at the Smart Cities Committee meeting last time. So I, good luck in your efforts towards accountability. And I, with forty-five seconds, I was really impressed by the council study session on equity, and it's my, it's my real hope that Raul Peral is nicely mentioned yesterday at council about with wage theft issues. We're all hoping for better wage theft issues practices, and Raul Peral has nicely mentioned how he feels the public needs to be more involved with that process. I hope we can apply that to the equity ideas and have a really good summer about how it can be a, a community experience. You know, even as you have, we can all agree on your centralized ideas at this time with the budget, you know, maybe we can grow community ideas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Largent?
Thank you, everyone. Scott Largent. At the county meetings, their attendance is not mandatory, and the first time that, well, I mean, a couple of times before that, I went out there on a sidewalk with a megaphone, but I went out there to try to get the police department to show up to county meetings. When I would go to the Jail Diversion and Behavioral Health Subcommittee of the Reentry Network, you guys had a deputy chief there, Shawnee Williams, that was a no-show for two and a half years, okay? He received emails from me, phone calls. I was out on that sidewalk with that bullhorn, did the same thing with the big chief's window. I kept wondering why these people were not there. And at that same time is when I started filling out those little forms to actually try to talk to you, Sam. I figured, hey, talk to the person in charge, start asking him questions why his people aren't there. Then I realized the chain of command, maybe start going through the city manager, and that's why I showed up over at your office. I started kind of filling out the forms, just kind of asking, why are people not showing up? Now, if your people were there at these committees, they would've realized that booze is not the problem, and that the arrests were related to methamphetamines. Being able to provide that information, and I understand what you're saying, Johnny, about the, you know, the county needing to do more, but when you guys aren't there, they don't get that feedback that they need. And now we've got this, you know, station right now that's gonna start detoxing meth addicts, but it's three years later when it's absolutely out of control right now. I'm not just blaming it all on the city of San Jose. They should've been doing more to contact all of you to say your people weren't there. How does this slip through the cracks? And I understand Shawnee Williams, Shawnee no-show Williams is now a police chief up in Balaheo. I just don't know why we reward failure like that. It might sound weird. They did not show up for years. Start looking over the attendance on the county site. You can see the attendance on there. I think that it should be more or less mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jern.